Don't you know you radiate like the sun? We can feel your fire. Fire. Don't you know you radiate like the sun? The heat will take us higher, higher. Don't you know you radiate like the sun? We can feel your fire, fire. Don't you know you radiate like the sun? The heat will take us higher, higher.
Good morning Birmingham. Today is August eighth, twenty twenty-three. I call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Our invocation will be led today by the very Reverend R. Craig Smalley, Dean and Rector of Cathedral Church of the Advent, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor Abbott. If you'll please stand and join us, thank you.
Let us pray. Most gracious God, we give you thanks and praise for the gift of this day and this opportunity to gather together. We thank you for the city of Birmingham, for the men and women who have entered into the service and the care and the well-being of it. We thank you for those gathered today and their importance and presence in the city. As we're gathered together, be in the midst of us, not based in any way on our merits but on your mercies, and pray that you would work to, as we are so often in the human condition, fragmented personally and factioned interpersonally, that you would work to bring us together. That you would work, most gracious God, in the name and in the well-being of all gathered, that you would give us wisdom, that you give us your grace and your guidance, and that the care and the well-being of all would be seen to and that you would knit us together with you and one another. We recognize our need of you. We give you thanks for those who have entered in unto service in this place. We give you thanks for our city, both its strengths but also its challenges and its opportunities. And we do pray for your guidance of all gathered here, the gift of your wisdom, the gift of your discernment, for the care, for the well-being of all, for the building up of our community. And all this I ask and all this I offer now in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Reverend Smalley for that prayer and Councilor Abbott for our pledge. Good morning, Mr. Clerk, if you'll read the role-
Good morning. Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Morning. Councilmember Tate. Morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Council Pro Tem Smithman. Council President Alexander.
Good morning, President. Councilors, the minutes are not ready from the meetings of May second, twenty twenty-three through August first, twenty twenty-three. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Madam President. Good morning to the council. Good morning to the public. It's good to see everybody this morning. Madam President and Council, yesterday was the first day of Birmingham City Schools. As we, as a way to celebrate and encourage our students, the city of Birmingham was honored to join in with scores of volunteers from across the city with at least one hundred and fifty city employees who were represented at forty schools to greet them in on a bright early morning and wish them a success in their school year. I want to take the time to acknowledge as we cover the superintendent, the Board of Education, as we cover the administrative staff as well as each principal of the forty-three schools, every teacher, every support staff, custodian, bus driver, cafeteria worker, everybody that touches our students, we wish them all a successful school year. Separate and apart from everything we do here at the city in support of them related to financial literacy, conflict resolution, mental health, Birmingham Promise Apprenticeships and Scholarships, we do want to take the time to pause and acknowledge the seriousness of the sheer related to the Third Grade Literacy Act. There's much work to be done. So I'll be back before you, as well as the public, probably on a pretty consistent basis, where we are as a community with families, parents, and army volunteers, what we need to do to support third grade literacy and reading. So I'll be sure to follow with you all related to that. Last week was pretty big in our city. I want to just acknowledge a few things. The city of Birmingham welcomed thousands of journalists, tech entrepreneurs, HBCU president, Secretary of Education, and Major League Baseball. And kudos to pretty much everybody that made last week a success in how we opened our doors for literally thousands of people. I think that just two of those alone, the NABJ, National Association of Black Journalists Convention, as well as Tech, Slough Tech, brought in almost four thousand people into our city who ate and drank and stayed in our hotels and rented cars. So we look forward to providing some of- Kevin, let's be sure we get them some preliminary numbers on how well we did in sales taxes and lodging taxes last week. With that said, I also want to acknowledge a contingency of the city council, starting with Pro Tem Crystal Smithman as well as Latonya Tate, as well as Clinton Woods, along with a city of Birmingham leadership in Winnipeg, Canada, there to observe as well as receive the flag for the city of Birmingham to host the twenty twenty-five World Police and Fire Games. Everybody seems excited. All the athletes from around the world, at least sixty-plus countries are excited, and we look forward to welcoming them two years from now. But I want to thank you all for your presence and showing out for the city of Birmingham. Madam President and Council, we recently announced, as we continue to talk about forging justice, that the city of Birmingham is partner, is partnering with churches, nonprofits, and businesses to host the twenty twenty-three Forging Justice Commemoration Week. As stated last Tuesday, it will be September tenth through the sixteenth. The community is invited to share in a series of discussions with nationally acclaimed thought leaders, a conference on healing, art interpretations, a film screening, a visit by international dignitaries, and a special keynote as stated by Sixteenth Baptist Church Associate Supreme Court Justice Katanji Brown Jackson. For more information, which they've asked us to share, please go to birminghamal.gov/forgingjustice. As you know, last Tuesday was also announced the McNair exhibit. Related to the McNair exhibit, the city of Birmingham proudly presents through the eyes the photography of Chris McNair, which is a captivating exhibit that pays tribute to Birmingham civil rights era through the eyes of the late photographer Chris McNair. This exclusive exhibit features twenty-two images captured by McNair during that pivotal era. It is located on the second floor of City Hall and will run until Saturday, September sixteenth. That's my mom's birthday, by the way. For more information, please visit birminghamal.gov/mcnareexhibit. Madam President and Council, let me take the time to say that all of us have seen photos, whether it's from elementary school to visit at the museum, the Civil Rights Institute, but those are, that exhibit is some photos I've never seen. So if you get a chance, check it out. Definitely share with your citizens in your district as well. Just a few upcoming deadlines. The deadline for the city of Birmingham Community Arts Grant closes next Friday, August eighteenth. And so, Madam President and Council, we want to encourage, we want you to encourage your residents as well. Well, not our residents, but our local organizations to be sure to get in their information. Also, applications for the city of Birmingham poet laureate applications are now being accepted, and that'll be through October second. And for more information on both of these initiatives, please go to createbirmingham.org. Again, that's createbirmingham.org. This Friday will be Full Truck Friday in front of City Hall, short twentieth, in front of Lynn Park. August the eleventh, from eleven AM to two PM. And please come out and enjoy pretty much a host of things you all know that we put on. As a weekly reminder, but I can never say this enough, the city of Birmingham will continue to keep residents informed about bulk trash pickup with daily updates our online at birminghamal.gov/bolkttrash. And residents using their new carts, please place them in front of your homes as well as when your trash is picked up. Please take them off the curb and bring them back onto your private property. You can receive more updates by going to birminghamal.gov/pickup or by texting B M ready to eight 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 seven seven seven. And at this time, Madam President and Council. My last note, as a proclamation I want to give related to the National Minority Donors Awareness Month. At this time, I want to ask Dr. Latoya R. Bishop, along with any of her guests, to please join her as we present this proclamation. As she comes, Dr. Bishop is the multicultural educator at Legacy of Hope. If you didn't know, August is National Minority Donor Awareness Month. We would like to help shine a light on this important work representing this proclamation. I'll only read it in part, but before they come up, I will say, I will talk briefly, Madam President and Council, about the importance of being an organ donor as well as how we as minority citizens, black citizens should participate and be organ donors. In the states where as the health and well-being of our diverse communities are of paramount importance to the city of Birmingham. And whereas the city of Birmingham recognizes the importance of promoting and supporting organ, eye, and tissue donation as a means to save and enhance the lives of individuals from diverse backgrounds. And whereas the National Organ, Eye, and Tissue Donation Multicultural Action Group has established the month of August as National Minority Donor Awareness Month with the aim of fostering a positive culture surrounding organ, eye, and tissue donation and thereby improving the quality of life for a wide swath of our communities. Now therefore, I Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council do hereby proclaim the month of August as National Minority Donor Awareness Month. And I urge all residents to embrace this occasion as an important opportunity to learn about the importance of organ, eye, and tissue donation and to engage in conversations that promote inclusivity, understanding, and empathy among all communities. Sixteen, when I first got my license, I remember being asked that I want to be an organ donor. I said no. Think I said no because I was afraid of, I don't know what I was afraid of, honestly, Madam President. Probably death. Didn't want to talk about it, right? Didn't want to think about it. So I said no. I was sixteen at the time, immature, didn't know what I was doing. But I do remember renewing my license, and I was asked again, did I want to be an organ donor? I said yes. I'm proud to be an organ donor. And I want to encourage all of us to be organ donors in our community. My mother was married to her late husband for sixteen years. He died December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, a few months before COVID. And it was pretty shocking. But there was a moment in that where a call came in or a doctor came about Reggie. He was an organ donor. And then I got the call once I took my mom home from them about the process. But it's clear that he saved lives. In his death, he was able to save a life. I think if we have an opportunity, at what point of time we transition, we have the opportunity to save a life. I want to encourage all of us to be organ donors. With that, I want to invite Dr. Bishop up.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for having us here. He actually said everything that I wanted to say. I want to encourage everyone to please register to become an organ donor. One person can save up to eight lives through organ donation, and you can heal seventy-five more through tissue donation. So it's a conversation that we definitely need to have. But the reason why I'm here today is to recognize National Minority Donor Awareness Month. I do have some goodies for everyone here today. If you need more, please call me. But one thing that we're having is our upcoming Gospel Celebration is going to be at God and Light Church on August the eighteenth. We have a health fair starting at five thirty PM. We encourage you to please come out, get some screenings done. And of course, the Gospel Celebration will start at seven o'clock. We do have several invited guests that we're hoping that you will enjoy, one being the Birmingham Mass Choir, the God and Light Worship Team, as well as the Fifth Friday Worship Choir as well, too. And of course, we will be infusing information from people that are recipients, donor families, sharing their story about donations. So this is a great way to connect to us. I want to thank, we have our executive director here, my Director of Education here, and of course, several members of our organization and task force here joining me today. But again, one of the most important things we want to know is that when people register, you know, have the right information. If you don't know, you can call us. With that being said, if you have events that are going on in the city, in the schools or at sororities, I have Madam Chair that's in a sorority as well, too. Organizations, please invite us. We would love to come out and have a conversation on why organ donation is very important. And the reason why we're recognizing this month, for those that don't know, about sixty percent of those individuals that's on the waitlist, they look just like me. A lot of them are waiting for a kidney. So that's very, very important. So that's why we're trying to recognize this month so much. So if you see something from Legacy of Hope, please share to your social media. We really will appreciate that. Anything dealing with organ donation. Again, I know it's not a topic that no one wants to talk about on a daily basis, but this is something that you never know how you're connected and maybe a family member is connected. I know if I take a poll that there will probably be several people that probably know someone that's on the waitlist, have received a transplant, or either someone is going through dialysis that possibly may need a transplant. So we encourage you to register, contact me. My information can be found on the website. Or you can just talk to me after I do have some business cards. But again, we definitely want to make sure that we're going to be engaged in the community. And thank you for this opportunity to have us receive this proclamation here today. So I'll leave this here for you, and of course, you know how to get in contact with me if you need something else. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Thank you so much.
Madam President and Council, you're longer than usual, but helpful information today, as always. I appreciate you all individually and as a collective. As a city council, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Woodfin. I do just want to reiterate two topics that you did bring to our attention. And one is the readiness and the all hands on deck that we need to take on as a community. And that's to ensure that our second and third graders will be able to maintain and achieve those levels of literacy. I did have opportunity to talk with District Seven school representatives and leadership among the schools in District Seven. And that was one of their major concerns as principals, faculty, and staff is just the essence and the urgency of ensuring that our children will be able to meet those standards. They reminded me that our second and third graders, they started school during COVID. So there is that learning slump there as a result of that. So those first formative years outside of pre-K was very important and something that they lacked that a normal student would have been able to do.
So just to reemphasize what you said, Madam President, and to the council, I had a chance to visit two elementary schools this morning. I went to the principals and I was like, take me to your third, please take me to your third grade classes. And for each principal, they both volunteered literally the same thing you just said. The current third graders who started school yesterday, they were not in a classroom in kindergarten. All right? Let me repeat that. They were not in anybody's classroom when they started elementary school. And so there is a gap there. There's a significant gap there. There's work to do. And I am clear, which is why I'm working with the superintendent, working with the school system, engaging principals. I'll be calling on you all. There will be a plan once there's some baseline data set on how we'll have a volunteer, army of volunteers to be able to engage for schools in your individual districts. But we have work to do. This is an all hands on deck moment. This is a crisis and a sense of, we need to have a sense of urgency about it. And we're all responsible. All right? It's not just the system. It's not just third grade teachers. It's not just parents. It's all of us as adults in this community. So look forward to that continued conversation. It is ironic that everybody is here except the birthday girl. So I do want to take the time to publicly state, and it was yesterday, happy birthday to Pro Tem Crystal Smith. Hopefully, she's out celebrating. And I forgot something, Madam President and Council. I have one more proclamation, actually. And it is related to the National Health Center Week. Again, that's the National Health Center Week. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Thomas Greer Jr., along with any of Doc's guests to come up. Yes, Doc has a whole crew. Don't be shy, everybody. As Dr. Greer comes up, Doc is the Chief Executive Officer of the Alabama Regional Medical Services. And they do really, really important work that at a certain point, I want him to come up and share and explain. Oh yeah, they're super deep. But just to give you a little bit, Madam President and Council, before I give this portion of this proclamation or read a portion of it, that is. Community health centers have served as essential providers of high-quality, affordable and comprehensive primary and preventive health care for more than fifty years in our community, benefiting medically underserved communities and contributing significantly to America's healthcare system. So at this time, what we want to do to Dr. Greer as well as his team, I look good, too, is to pay tribute to them with the special proclamation that reason part. In the states where as the community health centers represent the largest primary care network in the country, serving as the healthcare for more than thirty million Americans across more than fourteen thousand communities, making them a critical element of our health system. And whereas community health centers continuously innovate by integrating various services beyond primary care such as oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services to meet the unique needs and challenges of their communities. Now therefore, I Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby proclaim August sixth through the twelfth, twenty twenty-three, as National Health Center Week and encourage all Americans to participate by visiting their local health centers and celebrating the invaluable partnership between Americans, communities, health centers, and communities that they serve. And at this time, Madam President, I want to step aside and let Dr. Greer give us way more important information than I could.
Good morning, Madam President, city council members. Thank you for this opportunity, recognizing community health across the country. And you have some gems right here in Birmingham who are part of that movement. Alabama Regional Medical Services, one of those gems. My colleague, Dr. Waits, is here from Kahaba Health, another gem. Christ Health also. So we are part of this national movement to provide quality healthcare for our residents here in Birmingham. We are pleased to let you know also we're in the schools. I hear a lot of discussion this morning about our students. We want to make sure their health is taken care of, their oral health is taken care of. And so we are thanking you for recognizing us. I want to recognize members of our board, my board here, my vice chair, Mr. Holbert and Attorney Adams, and my executive leadership team are also here represented. So thank you for having us. Thank you for recognizing this week. We intend, we want to make, not only serve patients, but we want patients to do better, feel better, look better, and be a part of this meetings, meetings like these. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Dr. Waits.
Madam President, Mayor Woodfin, and councilors, thank you so much. It's a great honor to be a part of this National Health Center Week, honoring the tireless commitment and valuable contributions of FQHCs like Alabama Regional Medical Services, Kahaba Medical Care, Christ Health Center. Kahaba Medical Care has embodied the spirit of the FQHC movement since its inception. From our humble beginnings in 2004, we've had remarkable growth, providing over 170,000 visits in 2022 alone. We were recognized with HERSUS prestigious Health Center Quality Award eight years in a row, cementing our status as a provider of high-quality healthcare. And in just five short years, being a part of the Birmingham community, we've quadrupled the percentage of low-income patients that have affordable access to primary care in the zip codes that we serve. In terms of collaboration, I want to highlight a few of our departments. Our Mental and Behavioral Health Department has deep city, county, state, and federal collaborations in substance abuse programs and counseling programs, making it one of the largest integrated behavioral health programs in the state, and was last year awarded HERSUS Behavioral Health Award, exceeding national benchmarks for mental healthcare. Two decades ago, the City of Birmingham lost not just one, but two of its family medicine training programs at UAB and at Caraway. Through a joint venture with the UAB HereSync School of Medicine, Kahaba Medical Care has taken the lead in opening four family medicine residency programs, two of them here in Birmingham, and one of them being in the West End community. This is a critical workforce pipeline, fostering a generation of medical professionals driven by excellence, conscientiousness, and compassion, dedicated to serving underserved urban and rural areas. We're already seeing the fruits of this success, as two of our physician graduates just this year are remaining in the west side of Birmingham as we open another location in Woodland Park next month. Each of these statistics and numbers, projects and successes represent lives touched, suffering alleviated, and communities empowered. So thank you again for celebrating National Health Center Week. We want to commend not just our contributions, but acknowledge and celebrate all FQHCs like the Alabama Regional Medical Services that you see here, and the crucial role that we all play in the healthcare system. So thank you, Mayor Whitman, Madam President, councilors, for today's proclamation.
Thank you. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to just applaud all of you who are here today, and just your presence in our communities means so much. Having access to high-quality primary care in our neighborhoods is so important. And I know there are probably more, but specifically Alabama Regional Medical, Kahaba, and Christ Health, you know, making mental health services available, substance abuse-related services available. I mean, I just can't thank you enough. And, you know, just anecdotally, I do have a staff member who, as an entrepreneur who did not have insurance, was using one of the federally qualified health centers. And once she came on board and had insurance and could go anywhere, she chose to stay at her federally qualified health center because of the quality of care. So, you know, that speaks volume, that you all are providers of choice, even though you provide for the least, you know, people who are less able to pay for their medical services. And I just want to put a plug in for Third Avenue West Corridor. It could really use a federally qualified health center. So please look at locations on Third Avenue West. I think you'll find the customer base diverse and fitting for what you do. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Clark. Thank you for just reiterating the services that these two agencies give us, along with the third. I know Kahaba Health, they were very, first ones out there, offering, as well as ARMS, offering vaccinations and care for residents when it was time during the COVID crisis. So we appreciate it. We all know the disparity of healthcare that we see in our communities, and so it's organizations like these that provide that healthcare to our families. So thank you very much.
Madam President, I have four more proclamations.
You're scaring us now.
I saw, I got JT. I was, I was just playing.
I know.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you very much. A last thing I do want to reiterate is also the proclamation the mayor gave about organ donation. I don't know about Dr. O'Quinn, but today I feel like we've been in company. We've been with all these medical scientists and people. Dr. O'Quinn's background, mine is a clinical laboratory medicine tech, laboratory, laboratory technologist. But anyway, just talking about how we become aware of organ donation, sometimes it's at the moment that Mayor Whitman talked about, when you have a family member that's in crisis, you have to make that, that type of decision. But we all can do it when we go and either obtain our driver's license or renew it. So it's something for us to really take into consideration. So thank you, Mayor Whitman. At this time, councilors, we are ready to entertain the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call those items for us?
Consent agenda starts on page two with item two. Page three, we have items three, four, five, and six on consent. Page four, items seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11 are on consent. Page five, we have items 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16 on consent. And page six, we have items 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21 on consent. Page seven, we have items 22, 23, 24, and 25 on consent. And on page eight, we have item number 28 on consent, and we have one additional item.
All right, thank you. Councilors, at this time, are there any items you'd like to add or remove from the consent agenda? Counselor Williams, item number two, thank you. Any other items, councilors? All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial, and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation, they're indicated with a P on the agenda, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Councilors, if I can entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
I didn't hear the, who's that?
Counselor Williams and Counselor Abbott.
Thank you. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, thank you. The consent agenda passes. If you were here for any item that was listed as consent, it has been approved. We'll continue with the rest of our agenda, and we hope you have a great day. First item, Mr. Clerk.
Should be item one, an ordinance approving, authorize the mayor to execute for, as the act of said city, a statutory warranty deed, and such other documents and instruments as necessary to finalize the conveyance of properties to Northside Redevelopment LLC, located at 2212 15th Avenue North, 2214 15th Avenue North, Birmingham pursuant to an amended and restated redevelopment project and funding agreement between the city and Northside Redevelopment LLC dated January the 3rd, 2023, with such properties to be used in connection with the development of the Open Air Amphitheater and related facilities on 25th Street North, adjacent to the Star Development. This is the second reading of this item. I need a motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, item is before you.
All right, thank you, councilors. This is an ordinance that is authorizing the mayor to execute the warranty deed and documents to finalize the conveyance of the properties in relationship to Northside Redevelopment LLC. Any questions regarding this item, or you need any further clarification from the administration? We're ready for the vote.
Okay, council, we'll, they'll do a roll call for
Thank you.
Permanent operation item. Councilmember Abbott?
No.
Councilmember Clark?
I need to abstain, thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Tate? Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
President Pro Tem Smithman is out. Council President Alexander?
Yes. Thank you, councilors. That item number one passes. Next item?
Next would be item two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement with the Birmingham Times Media Group LLC, under which the Birmingham Times Media Group LLC will provide through weekly print and online media valuable and essential information and public awareness to the citizens on city codes, ordinances, programs, services, and other related concerns to positively support the Birmingham communities. Additionally, the Birmingham Times Media Group should deliver and distribute 50 weekly copies of the Birmingham Times newspaper. The cost of the services shall not exceed the sum of $65,000 to be paid in two equal installments for a term beginning December 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024. Motion, please.
Motion on the item? Move the item? All right, thank you. At this time, Counselor Williams, you asked this item to be pulled from consent.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to this. You know, I know that we have an obligation under Alabama state law to advertise all of our public meetings, all of our, you know, and think about every time that there's a zoning request, we have to advertise that. I mean, there's, we have a heavy obligation under law to advertise when public meetings take place. And actually, I think that one of the best places for us to do it in this city is Birmingham Times, because it's specific to the city, and that's specific to who would have an interest in attending these public hearings. But it just seems that having 50 copies of the Times for $65,000 in taxpayer money is excessive in terms of an actual spend with that. So I just wanted to, no question, just wanted to voice my concern.
All right, thank you, councilors. Any questions regarding this item? This time, we're ready for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, item two passes. Thank you. Next item?
Skipping to 26, on page seven, a resolution setting a public hearing August 29th, 2023, to consider adoption of an ordinance mini chapter 19 of Title 12 of the General Code of the City of Birmingham to further regulate vehicle immobilization and non-consensual towing with the City of Birmingham. And this is just setting a public hearing.
Is there a motion on the item to set this hearing?
I move approval.
All right, councilors, before us is setting the public hearing on August 29th for consideration regarding how we regulate vehicle immobilization and non-consensual towing. So any questions? We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, thank you. We've set that hearing for August 29th, 2023. I'm sorry, Dr. O'Quinn?
Just wanted to ask a question. There was some conversation about items of permanent operation needing a roll call vote?
Well, the only reason I did this one, because we're just setting the public hearing, so that no discussion can be had on it anyway, so.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Good question. Thank you very much. All right, so item 26 passes. We've set that hearing for August 29th. Next item?
The item 27, a resolution setting a public hearing August 29th, 2023, to consider the adoption of an ordinance in replacing chapter 15 of the Title 10 of the General Code of the City of Birmingham, regulating the operation of commercial parking lots and the charges, fees for parking.
Move the item? Sorry.
Second.
Thank you. All right, councilors, again, this is setting a public hearing. I should have called both of these at the same time, I apologize. Setting the public hearing for August 29th, 2023. We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, thank you. So we've set those dates for the public hearings. Thank you very much. Next item?
I should be, additional item 29, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a right-of-way encroachment license agreement whereby the Board of Trustees of the University of Alabama at Birmingham is allowed to install two barriers and elevated platform, 10 feet high metal security fencing, four feet high gate, six feet steel plates, D-ring tie-down units, a tie, three barricade, the detour signs, hysteria lighting, hysteria lighting, bullets, and other related equipment to support the proposed installation of a mobile auxiliary units under related equipment and other, further, and further to remove existing concrete planter, brick pavers, and existing directional sign, light, and traffic poles, bike racks, trees, plants, and shrubbery, sprinkler system, all in the public right-of-way and thereby provide additional emergency room space for patients visiting the hospital. The two freestanding mobile auxiliary units will be placed in front of the University Hospital North Pavilion, located at 519th Street South, and encroach 23.5 feet into and upon the right-of-way of 18th Street South. Motion, please.
Move the item?
All right, thank you, councilors. This item is before us, and again, this is authorizing an agreement whereby the Board of Trustees of the University of Alabama will be allowed to install the items that are listed before you. This was approved and recommended by the Director of Planning, Engineering, and Permits, as well as the Public Improvements Committee. There's several diagrams and information that is included in here. Are there any questions regarding this item, or do you need more explanation? Dr. O'Quinn?
I guess my, my question is, is how long? I'm seeing in the agreement that the term of the agreement is for, for five years. I would hope that this is not going to be a five-year-long situation.
Chief?
Yeah, Madam President, I'll, I'll yield to the representatives from UAB to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning, council. So David Dada, Director of Government Relations at UAB. So the, the five-year term, that was recommended by the department, we were, we don't need it for five years, really, it's a three-year plan. This is in relation to the emergency department expansion of the hospital. So that's why they recommended that, just in case, but it's not needed for that amount of time. But also, I have here with me Mr. Arpan Lindy. He's the Chief Facilities Officer for UAB Medicine, as well as Robert Sharpe, the Senior Director of Construction for UAB Medicine. They can answer any other, like, questions you all may have regarding the item.
Yeah, so I, I guess my kind of follow-up to that is 18th Street is our BRT corridor. So how is this going to impact operations of the express?
May I have my colleagues in speaker?
Thank you, sir. If you'll just identify yourself for our records, thank you.
Robert Sharpe, I'm the Senior Director of Construction for UAB Medicine. It does not encroach into the street, it stays behind the curb.
Okay.
All of the development is behind the curb, so it should not block the street at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, when did y'all come before the Public Improvement Committee of the City Council?
Madam President?
Yes.
I couldn't, I'm sorry, I can't answer that question. So this was supposed to appear before PIC, but due to a cancellation notice, we had it cleared by President Pro Tem Smithman to include this item on the addendum. So I think that was just a misprint within the, the reading of the item. So it never appeared before PIC.
Well, two of the committee members are sitting next to each other, and one's very young and has a good memory. And we couldn't remember ever having seen this before, but it said we recommended it. That was an oops.
That's, yes, that is a oops. It should just say
Well, maybe we could fix it.
Yes.
Fix the oops.
We encourage the oops to say recommended by President Pro Tem Smith.
Thank you. So we'll make that correction. I'm sure that's made, but clerk. Any other questions, comments about the item? We're ready for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, let it be
Was there a question? I apologize, Counselor Woods, go ahead, sorry.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Want to get clarity on the, you said it's not encroaching on the street. Is this taking up the parking, or is it taking up the sidewalk? What exactly? I can't see the elevation.
It takes up the sidewalk.
Up and down the
We have a plan to route the pedestrian traffic around through an existing drive-through at North Pavilion.
Okay. Okay, so you'll route the walking traffic like underneath?
Right, through an existing sidewalk that's not a public sidewalk. It's along the drive-through drop-off at North Pavilion.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we're ready for the vote. I
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you. Item 29 passes. Looking forward to that expansion for our residents. Thank you. Next item?
Should be, that should be all the items.
All right, councilors, at this time, we're ready to entertain any updates or comments you have from your various districts. And Counselor Clark, you seem like you're ready. We'll start right here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Enjoyed being out, being up early and out with leaders in the Bush Hills neighborhood to welcome students, parents, principals, teachers, and staff back to Bush Hills Steam Academy. Our Parks Director was also there as Bush Hills Steam Academy is one of the partners with the park system for the Safe Haven Initiative. Neighborhood meetings, we have the Bellevue Heights Neighborhood Meeting tonight at 6:30 in person at Brown Elementary School. And also, the Central Park Neighborhood will meet this Thursday at 6:00 PM at Five Points West Regional Library. You know, the mayor already mentioned that applications are open for the 2425 City of Birmingham Poet Laureate. I just want to note that this initiative is in partnership with the City of Birmingham and funded by the Alabama State Council on the Arts. of Birmingham and funded by the Alabama State Council on the Arts and the Parks, Rec and Cultural Arts Committee of this Birmingham City Council. And this is an honorary poetry ambassador for the City of Birmingham, and roles and responsibilities include making local appearances, facilitating public and educational programs, and building advocacy and community through poetry. The poet laureate will receive an honorarium of five thousand dollars over the course of this term, of their appointed term. And as he noted, you can go to createbirmingham.org to get more information. Each Thursday, we continue to walk around the Crossplex area. We meet at the Starbucks at seven fifty-five A M. to do about a one and a half mile loop. It's, it's been shortened by the tree line. We try to follow the shade trees in this weather. We are joined by our partners from Freshwater Land Trust and other District Eight neighbors, so come out and join us. Unless it's raining, we're pretty consistent, we're consistently there. Also, the Starbucks, the Crossplex, I'm sorry, the, the Crossplex Starbucks in Five Points West is celebrating their fifth anniversary on Saturday, August nineteenth, from eleven till two P M. And in preparation for the event, the store leadership is looking to partner with local nonprofit organizations. If your organization is interested in having a table at no cost and specifically working in the areas of mental or physical wellness, education or food security, please contact Aki Dale at, okay, this is an interesting email address. It's U S two one seven four seven four nine at Starbucks dot com. Also, please mark your calendars. The Inslee Highlands Neighborhood is hosting a cleanup on August nineteenth with registration starting early because of the heat at eight thirty A M. We're meeting at the Mac Mahon Park, and the cleanup will run from nine A M. till eleven A M. That's Saturday, August nineteenth at eight thirty A M. So please come out and help us beautify Inslee Highlands. We're grateful always for the support from our steady partners in cleaning up, the Black Warrior Riverkeeper, Birmingham Municipal Court, GASP, and Renew Birmingham. Also, there's a very popular event hosted by the Community Development Department. It's taking place on August twelfth from ten to two at Sloes Furnaces. It's a workshop called Maintaining Wealth Through Housing. It will feature some, some information on comprehensive estate planning strategies in partnership with local and national experts. This workshop will strive to help attendees pass on their legacy as efficiently and effectively as possible. During this workshop, participants will be able to work with experts to file official estate planning documents and create a plan of action to help protect their family, their life savings and their legacy. Registration is free but required to attend. Lunch will be provided. And to register, you can go to H T T P S colon forward slash slash estateplanningbirmingham dot R S V P I F Y dot com forward slash. I know that's really complicated, but this event may be at capacity right now, and they're promising to offer this workshop again. So I don't know if there's a waiting list involved, but do attend. And I think that concludes my remarks. Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. And Mr. Moore told me that his are via video at the end of the meeting, so he had to step away.
Thank you.
The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, August ninth at three thirty P M. in Conference Room A. We've had a couple of cancellations in the past, but we still only have two cases, which is good. The Neighborhood Association meeting for this evening, there are two of them. Tonight at six o'clock, the East Avondale Neighborhood meets via conference call. And at six P M., also, the Highland Park Neighborhood meeting is hybrid. You can either attend the meeting in person or do it by Zoom. And if anyone has any concerns or issues, please call three one one. It's our one call does almost it all number. And then My Beham three one one, of course, is my favorite app because you can download photographs. So I encourage everyone who has complaints about what's going on in the city and the, you know, our dereliction of duty in their opinion, they should send photographs of it so that we can get it fixed. And I want residents of District Three to please go to our website, W W W dot beham district three dot com, because all of the information that we receive, that we don't have time to give in our three minutes up here, is, is on that website for District Three. So thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Dr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. East Avondale Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six P M. via conference call. Please call my office at two five four two six seven nine if you need that call-in information. Oak Ridge Park Neighborhood Association will meet next Monday, August fourteenth at six P M. at the Harris Homes Recreation Center. The Transportation Committee meeting will be next Monday, August fourteenth at two P M. in Conference Rooms D and E. Please contact Kimberly Phillips at kimberly dot phillips at birminghamal dot gov for submissions or questions. The Jefferson County Commission is, is hosting its annual Amnesty Week this week, nine thirty A M. to four thirty P M. daily at the Jefferson County Courthouse Criminal Justice Center at eight oh one Richard Arrington Junior Boulevard North in the lower level courtroom. For additional information, call the Public Defender's Office at two oh five three oh seven seven zero two one. And finally, the annual Taste of Fourth Avenue Jazz Festival will take place Saturday, August twenty-sixth from two P M. to ten P M. and Sunday, August twenty-seventh from two P M. to eight P M. in the historic Fourth Avenue Business District. This event is free to the public, and additional information can be found at W W W fourth avenue jazz dot org. Thank you. That concludes my announcement.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Roebuck Springs Neighborhood will be meeting this Thursday, August the tenth at seven o'clock at the regular spot at New Beginning Church. And then Roebuck will be meeting August the fourteenth, which is Monday at six thirty at Birmingham's East Precinct. We had a great time at East Precinct at National Night Out this past, past week, and it was good to see people from all over East Precinct come and barbecue with the people that answer their calls, their beat officers. So that was a good time, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Counselor Tate, Pretty in Pink?
Thank you, Madam President. I first would like to thank Counsel Williams for reading my messages in my absence line yesterday.
A lot of messages. I've already covered all of them.
Okay. Here the district nine announcement. Sandusky Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight, August the eighth, six P M. at the Jimmy Hudson Rec Center. It's located at three oh nine Pratt Highway. North Pratt Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at six P M. at the New Haven Apartments. That's thirteen, Thirteen Avenue West, Birmingham. I'm sorry, Madam President. It's, no, it's Thirteen Avenue W.
Okay.
Birmingham, Alabama. I'm still sleeping from a long trip back in here. Oak Ridge Neighborhood Meeting will be held on Thursday, August the tenth at four P M. And that's on conference call. You can dial in nine five two two zero six four nine one eight. The access code is two two three four one eight. Hoover City Neighborhood Meeting will be held on Thursday, August the tenth at six P M. at the Hoover Center Rec Center. And the next Public Safety Meeting will be held Tuesday, August the twenty-second at one P M. Please submit agenda items by email Wednesday, August the sixteenth, no later than twelve noon to patrice dot collins at birmingham dot gov or gregory dot stanley at birmingham dot gov. If you have any questions or concerns, just feel free to contact the office at two five four two three oh two or two five four two zero nine six. Also, Madam President, the Central Pratt Neighborhood invites everybody, that means everybody, to be a part of their fifth annual fall cleanup to help clean their neighborhood. And that's Saturday, August the nineteenth, eight A M. to eleven P A M. And that's going to be at the Howard Sanford Rec Center where you can come register. And that's located at three twenty Avenue D, Birmingham, three five two one four. If you have any, any information you would like to gain, you can contact the President of the Central Pratt Neighborhood, Mr. Donald Smith. And that's two oh five nine one three four three six eight. Madam President, I also would like to give a special shout-out to my staff who attended two back-to-school backpack giveaways in my absence, one being in Inslee that was hosted by Be a Blessing Birmingham Ashley. And it was a whole lot of people. They gave over three hundred book bags, ways sixty-nine haircuts were, were given and clothes, just a array of things. Also want to shout-out to Pastor Harold Bass who also had a back-to-school giveaway. So between those two, it was over six hundred plus book bags that were given out to students. So that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Counselor Tate. Counselor Woods?
Thank you, Madam President. Quickly, the Kilo Springs Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six P M. at Smith Middle School. The Apple Valley Neighborhood Association, Back in Action, meeting tonight at six P M. at East Pinson Valley Rec Center. And then the Roebuck Neighborhood Association will meet Monday, next Monday, at six thirty P M. at the East Police Precinct. Really excited, like I said, so we, we hit our continued Operation Law and Care Saturday. Were able to really get out in community, help some of our seniors and single mothers. And really cool program, but we were able to work, or at least I was able to work directly with three young men and literally showing them how to use a lawnmower. Couple of them had never actually used a lawnmower, so just showing them that process, like kind of seeing them maybe struggle with it at first, kind of get over the hump, figure it out, kind of watch that confidence grow. And then one young man actually talked about going and seeing if he can cut the neighbor's yards and, and make some money. Had to work with him on his pricing because he said it was about four hundred dollars a yard. So I tried to, tried to pull my economics background out and help him out a little bit. But just good to see the wheels turning and just kind of what's possible. So definitely great appreciation for Rebirth Community Foundation and Pastor Doug Taylor for partnering with us on this. We even tiptoed in District Two and caught one over there. So we, there is a young man that knows how to cook grass over there now. So, but no, just really excited about that program and appreciate everybody's reaching out to try to volunteer. Wanted to give a special shout-out to Gable Lawrence, owner of Spring Clean Lawn Service, and Javon Bonner, owner of Plus One Landscaping and Electrical Service, for coming out and bringing all the, the quality grass cutting equipment. We were able to kind of make it go really quickly, jumping out and everybody pitching in and hitting the yards really quick. So shout-out to them. Also, World Police and Fire Games twenty twenty-five, really excited about that. I think the mayor talked about a couple of events we had this week, and about four thousand folks coming in town. And kind of this, this event has the potential to bring over ten thousand people to town for, you know, about ten days, ten to twelve days. And so really excited about that. So definitely look forward to having more conversation as Chaz makes sure we're ready.
Thank you, Counselor Woods. These are your announcements for District Six. Now, don't go out there on Facebook talking about Counselor Pro Tim wasn't here today because of her birthday yesterday. It's just precautionary. She didn't over-party or anything. But we do want to wish her related happy birthday wishes. She's a fellow Leo, so I know she parted hardest. But really, congratulations to her on her birthday. I hear the announcements for District Six. The South Tittysville Neighborhood will meet today at Holy Family Crystal Ray High School. That's located at eighteen thirty-two Centerway South, Birmingham. The Arlington West Neighborhood will meet today at six P M. at the West End Library located at thirteen forty-eight Tuscaloosa Avenue. The next Budget and Finance Meeting will occur on Monday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at three thirty P M. Submissions are due Wednesday, April ninth, by twelve noon. You can email those submissions to laquita dot wilson at birminghamal dot gov and ethan dot harris at birminghamal dot gov. The District Six Office will host a Farmer's Market on Saturday, August twelfth, from one thirty to three thirty at Memorial Park Recreation Center. The Arlington House will have fried catfish po-boys and Cajun fries. On August eleventh, you can call ahead your order at two zero five seven eight zero five six five six. All meals will be grab-and-go. Step-by-step, along with the District Six Office, presents Steppers Fun Fest. That's on August eleventh, from five to eight P M. at eight four one Indoor Training Facility, which is located at two twenty-two Sixth Avenue Southwest. There will be a dunking booth, face painting, Birmingham Police versus Teens basketball game, free food and more. And lastly, District Six and Operation Hope presents Financial Wellness Workshops at five thirty P M. on August seventeenth at the West End Library located at thirteen forty-eight Tuscaloosa Avenue. And you're encouraged to come learn about credit and money management. At this time, I have the following announcements from District Seven. I do just want to start by thanking Counselor Pro Tim, Counselor Tate and Counselor Woods for traveling to sort of give us a preview of what we can expect with our fire and police games. So we're looking forward to more collaboration among the council and at men as we plan that. I do want to thank those journalists that were here in the City of Birmingham. We had over thirty-five hundred, plus the tech group that were here at Sloes. So that was about four thousand visitors to the City of Birmingham. And I kept hearing people say it was almost like Magic City Classic Week, so I guess they had a great time. I do want to thank everyone that came out Sunday for the Safe Summer Series. Our inaugural version of that was at Lynn Park on Sunday. We made it through the rain. We had a lot of prayers that went up, and so we were able to have the redo of that concert. So thank all those residents that came out and enjoyed it. Also want to thank everyone that participated in the D seven bookbag giveaway and the partnerships we had. We had several, and I won't call them competing events, but we had several opportunities for residents in District Seven to have an opportunity to get that assistance and provide those bookbags and supplies. So I want to thank the Southwest Alliance. I want to thank where they went, Hopewell. I want to thank the District Seven staff and members of the Greater Shiloh Church where we were over there. And right up the street from us, that's in District Six, but they were having the Respect Rally and I think back at More Than Conquer. So we were just giving out and showing love all over the west side of Birmingham on Saturday. So thank you as our children prepare for a successful school year for Birmingham City Schools. I also want to thank all of those members of Birmingham government, council offices that went out and welcomed the students for the first day of school. I did see a Facebook post that said now all of those smiling faces and people were shaking hand on the first day of school. They want to see you back in the schools during the school year so you can continue that love and that support. So I will be making note of that. The, today, the Riley Neighborhood Association will meet at the Noble CME Church. That's at thirty-seven hundred Jefferson Avenue. They meet at six P M. On Thursday, August tenth, the West Brownsville Neighborhood Association will meet via conference call at ten A M. If you need the number, please call the D seven office at two oh five two five four two four nine eight. Bulk Trash and Brush Pickup is scheduled for Germania Park North. That's on Thursday, August tenth. So if you have some of those items, please prepare for that pickup on August tenth. On Monday, August fourteenth, the Oxmore Neighborhood Association will meet at the Oxmore Valley Community Center, and that's at nineteen ninety-two We Know the Road. That meeting is in person at six P M. The Bulk Trash and Brush Pickup is scheduled for Monday, August fourteenth, in the Riley Community. If you miss any pickups or you have to report any items, please peep dial three one one at two oh five two five four two four nine eight, or you have the D seven hotline at two zero five three zero four one seven nine seven, or we have the great My Beham three one one, the web, the app that is very useful for communicating these type of needs. Counselors, Committee of the Whole is scheduled to meet on Wednesday, August sixteenth, in Conference Rooms D and E at three thirty P M. Please be sure to send any recommendations you have for agenda items to izola dot hall at birminghamal dot gov so we can get those and get that community. to izola dot hall at Birmingham A L dot gov, so we can get those and get that communication to administration. Yes, yes. And um on Friday, August eighteenth, District Seven, we're hosting our quarterly Chat and Chew. This is with our D seven neighborhood leadership. This particular um session will be on August eighteenth. Those neighborhood presidents and leaders will receive that communication with an R S V back to us. Um this particular session is devoted to back to basics. So we'll be brainstorming and working with our D seven leadership to talk about protocols, um collaborating on different projects. So we'd like to see them initiate through their neighborhoods as well as um the use of nonprofits to help with certain programs in our neighborhoods. So we'll look forward to that on August eighteenth. At this time, councilors, we're ready to entertain. I believe Councilor Tate has something to say.
Just one one quick um announcement, Madam President. Please keep the take the peace in y'all your prayers, please. Y'all keep the take the peace.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilor Abbott?
I neglected to congratulate Epic School. One hundred percent of their third graders will be moving on. They can all read, and so I thought that that was notable, a hundred percent.
Very good.
Epic School. So congratulations.
Very good, very good. Uh that reminds me, um also on Friday, the um they give a trophy of the um Board of Education rep, Walt Wilson, for District Seven. He provides the trophy to the school, elementary school within the district that has the best um numbers when it comes to reading. So they had to pass the trophy on from Oxmoor Valley last year, pass it on over to um Jones Valley. So we want to congratulate those students in their ability to raise those scores and get that recognition. At this time, we'll have opportunity to hear from our speakers. Mr. Clark?
Frank Matthews.
No, Lord.
Can you bring that chair?
I just might need it. Good morning, uh distinguished counselor. And um of course, I'm gonna need just a little grace, if you would, uh President. Uh my brother passed on last on the twenty-fifth, and he was my challenged brother. He was my pen, my pen brother. He was one year my junior, and uh my sister really took care of him. And uh a lot has went on since I got back a few days ago, and I'm very exhausted. But I got this letter in the mail, and I apologize. I weren't able to make copies of it, so I wanted to give it to uh the President of the Chairman of Trans- of uh Transportation, because that's them aliens. Because, um thank you so much. I didn't have a chance to make a copy of it, um, Mr. Chairman. And uh so if you just take a quick look at it, and I want to go through something with you on it. First of all, um I don't, I don't park my car backwards. You know how the young people back in? I don't back in, okay? But on this, and just take a brief look at it, and it give it to other Transportation member. They can look at it, but I want to read some things and go with it. First of all, my brother died on the twenty-fifth. My sister called me and told me that my challenged brother, my pen, pen brother was dead. That his death affected me more than any other death in my life. My other brother was killed, drowned, gangs and all this, but that brother affected me. I uh I really need him to come out the house. I get this letter dated on the twenty-sixth that I parked downtown somewhere. I don't bag my car. My that's my Bentley. I don't park it back. I don't do that parking back. That's got my car parked and backwards. And it's got these pictures of my tag, and I don't even remember the coming out the house for two days. I had to prepare myself to go to California to do what the mayor and them talked about this morning. I had to go because we cremationists, we cremate. I had to get myself together to go to California to sign off for my brother because he never got to live his life out. So my niece went against my mother's orders strictly to me that we cremate us. We cremate. Cremate me and gonna throw me in Lake Erie. So I had to go out there to do that. And I don't recall, I absolutely cannot recall going anywhere on the twenty-sixth. That's God. That's on God, as a kid say. So I'm wanting to try to understand. I don't want, one, and if you if you get that back to me, so I want to go against it just, and what I need a little grace just to read that, just a little bit to validate what I'm talking about.
Thank you. First of all, let me offer condolences on the uh death of your brother. The item that we reviewed, this is a private entity that um you parked at, so it's not public, but you did hear us say today, we are having a um public hearing. We're looking at these type of predatory actions. So please know that we're working on your behalf with that.
Well, that's that's why I brought my cheer, because last time, they disrespected y'all when I was sitting there, remember?
Appreciate you.
And and I I stood up for y'all, because you know, I criticize y'all for foolishness that happened that day. And I do some foolish stuff too, but that was exceptionally foolish for me to go against the team. So I brought my cheer in case you come today. And he is, and you know, I gotta put a little comment, because I am hurting Frank Matthews standing here, because my mama gave me specific orders that we cremate each other. But I went against her orders. I the the last of my siblings, everybody important in my life, I was the last person to see them and hear their last wishes. But I went to California to sign off for my challenged brother because he didn't live his full life, so that someone else could see out of his eyes and use his organs, because he was challenged all his life. He caught on, he was caught on fire when he was two years old, and he screamed, and he screamed, and he screamed, and he ain't talk to nobody no more. But to come back and get this from there, so I want to know who signed off, or it's a private entity, but somebody in the city signed off for this group. And I need some understanding. This is my Bentley here, and that's I never back in, never. I don't do that stuff. That's kid's stuff. I don't know what to back in, and you just take as much time. So I wanted to to express that. And then there's such threats in there. So I want to commend y'all, and I want some heavy drama. I'm gonna come with the cheer, and I'm gonna swim. I'm gonna help y'all. I'm gonna swim with shoes on. I'm gonna be in all those meetings, because I didn't know that I was gonna be affected like this. And I promise you, I don't know if it's something I ain't getting. So I want you to uh 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 Mr. Chairman, I want to make copies and investigate. I don't back in. Anybody tell you, my girlfriends will tell you in a minute, don't I I don't ride nobody back in. What you back in, I want to get out, okay? So I promise you, I don't know what it is, but I promise, this seem like a hoax to me. So, uh Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna leave a copy. I mean, want you to make a copy of this, please, and investigate this for Frank Matthews, because I'm telling you, I got a good memory, and I promise y'all on God, on my mom, on everybody, I don't recall going out the house. I was grieved, and I don't recall going out on the twenty-sixth. My brother died. My sister called me at at ten forty-three. And thank you for the extended time, uh uh Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Matthews.
I leave my cheer, though. They might just come and get whipped some way.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Quinn?
Yeah, I just wanted to to comment and say thank you for for bringing this to our attention. Um it it has been a topic of discussion um as we consider changes to the um how private paid parking lots uh operate. And um this is something that's, you know, relatively new. It's not very widespread, so just for for other folks who may be listening to understand, um traditionally, the way parking enforcement on private lots has worked is is that um, you know, they simply tow your car. Um we have a couple of private lots around the city that I'm aware of um that have started doing automated citations. So in this case, um what they they're doing is they have um, you know, cameras installed on the lot, and um, you know, if you're not there paid, they're they're simply ma- mailing you a citation from a private entity. Um so uh it's something that we are aware of, and and, you know, again, thank you for coming and kinda highlighting this issue, because on August twenty-ninth, we have the opportunity to amend the ordinance to a- address these types of types of issues. So it's very timely that you come and talk to us and bring bring this to our attention. So thank you again.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next speaker?
Ricky Green.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh my name is Ricky Green. Um I live at ten oh one Twenty Street South, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two oh five, and I'm here to address the council today because I live in the Five Point South District, and over there in that district, we have a real problem with homelessness in that area. And a lot of them are uh drug addicts, addicted to drugs, and most of them suffer with mental illness. And I was trying to see because um it's not safe around there, because I can't even come out and walk with my kids or go to the park, because they hang out all in the park, getting high and doing things at that nature, uh pulling out their private parts, using the restroom just right in the open. I'm walking with my daughter, guy standing there with his pants down, just urinating on the building. And um, you know, I just want to be able to um, I say that a lot of those people are suffering with mental illness. So the rapidness of homelessness is really growing in this city here, and drugs is becoming a problem here also, which is the cause of most of the homelessness. A lot of them addicted to drugs. And I just say that, you know, we need to try to utilize and put together a special task force to go around and round these people up, because for one, there's too many resources in this city for anyone to have to live like that. And if anyone choose to be homeless, it cannot be in a right mind if they choose to live out in the street like that. And the more and the ones that are addicted to drugs, I understand, there's a lot of programs here. And I just want to say that um it's not fair to them that they're not getting the proper help they need because someone is over them or over their checks, and they getting these people money every month, and these people out there in the street live in that condition. And if we can round them up and give them the help they need, and then that money can be coming to the state, and they can begin to care that they need instead of people keep getting free rides over these people money, not taking care of these people. These people out there homeless, out their mind, and I don't think it's right that they should be out there like that. So I don't want to just uh, you know, attack them, because I know the situation that they're in, you know, but I think we should try to come up with uh something, just try to go out there and and round these people up and get them off the street, because for one, I live in a in a nice district, and there's a lot of businesses in that area, and it's really bad for business, because people be afraid to stop, because they out there lotteryin', begging for money. And they breaking their cars, and, you know, it just, it just, it's just not safe. I had my car burglarized twice since I lived in the area. So if you can just try to do something to get maybe the police to uh beef up security or patrol, because that's the only way that I can see things uh really just, you know, being handled. So that's all I ask of the council, and I thank you for your time, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Green. I appreciate you for bringing this issue uh before us. It's something that I know that the council has discussed among each other and uh ways that we can really work uh with the segment of our residents. And you've talked about several issues that really are gonna take some collaborative effort. You've got some federal and state legislation that could also, when we talk about managing the money and the resources for these individuals and how our administration, I know, you know, we have our pallet program that we are working on to provide housing. So it's just a great collaborative effort that takes place, but the issues you've brought to our attention are definitely on our radar as well. So thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Abbott?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment, uh Mr. Green, and it's good to see you this morning. Um Brother Brian Park is an embarrassment to the city of Birmingham. The things that go on, it, somebody sent me a video, and I mean, people are performing, well, they're just doing things that no civilized person should do in public. And that park seems to be getting no attention from anyone. The police don't do anything. Nobody's doing the park board. Nobody's doing anything, or so it appears to the residents and people who are in attempting to stay in business in Five Points. It's just horrifying what goes on over there, and there are people living in the park, and no other people will go in there. I mean, Mr. Green has children. He would like to take them to a park, which you sure as heck wouldn't take them to that park. I would be afraid to go there myself in the daytime. So it's an issue that needs to be addressed. I realize homelessness is one of the, well, it's probably the toughest issue the city has besides our broken sewer covers. Um, you know, we just have, we just have a problem throughout the city, but but poor Brother Brian Park has been forgotten by someone, because the, you know, no one's doing anything. So we need to to make a focus on that, I believe, from this administration to make sure, because, you know, Five Point South is one of our premier entertainment districts, and you don't want people afraid to go there even in the daytime. It's much, I mean, it's bad to be afraid to go there anytime, but you know, it's just, it's so bad. And the people, the businesses across the street are videotaping this stuff out their business windows. So everybody knows what's going on, except the people who should be doing something about it. So it really does need a focus.
Thank you, Councilor Quinn, and then Councilor Clark.
Yeah, I I I just wanted to reiterate what Councilor Abbott just said, and um, you know, the descriptions of what has been occurring at Brother Brian, um, I mean, you just can't make the stuff up. It's so horrifying. Um but it's extremely concerning to me. Um so there, there is a veterinary cardiologist that brought her practice um to the city of Birmingham. Um and, you know, just because of my background, I appreciate, you know, that is a specialty service um that you just don't see i- in many places. Um and and to have a veterinary cardiologist in the city of Birmingham um is is a privilege that many metro areas, uh much less individual municipalities um don't have, you know. So um spent an extraordinary amount of money setting up uh that building for her practice and moving her practice into the city of Birmingham, and and to have to deal with, you know, um frequent lewd acts and, you know, every manner of of stuff that you wouldn't want to have anywhere around you um in proximity to her businesses is really, you know, terrible. And um she's reached out to me on several occasions when it's, you know, gotten especially critical. Um but then, you know, it just comes back. So um I agree with you, Councilor Abbott, it's a pretty dire situation.
Thank you, Councilor Quinn. Councilor Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to uh also note that the businesses in the area, in addition to the one you mentioned, um Councilor O'Quinn are willing to be a part of the solution. They are, you know, in regular touch with folks who frequent the park and not insensitive, as, you know, Mr. Green noted, to their issues, but they would also like to uh invest in making the park better, not just physically, but I would imagine also in whatever kind of uh provision to help uh intervene on the circumstances there with individuals. And I'm reminded of uh CAPS. This is not a CAPS district, of course, but they had a person who would go into the parks inside the CAP district and uh engage the people and refer them to services, and maybe that's something that could be um, you know, that model could be uh funded and employed here to help people connect with services that they may be needing. Um I do realize if I do realize if addictions involved, you know, people may be happy the way they are. But I think whatever we can do, we need to look at the models that are out there. And even if it's not covered, this district isn't covered by, say, a CAPS layer. We need to, you know, invent something and figure out how to fund it. That can't stay the way it is, so.
Thank you, Councilor Abbott.
I just wanted to say that a bid district has just been approved by the property owners in, that's a business improvement district. So CAPS will be there, they'll be coming, but they're not there yet, and it's horrifying. It is just horrifying what goes on over there, because they sent me videos and I looked at them. And I wish I hadn't, because I can't get some of those visions out of my mind, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Chiefs, I'm hopeful you're listening so that we can, I do think, councilors, we're asking about an update about the pallet program, so that is an agenda item we could perhaps include on the committee of the whole. But I'd like to see a little bit more addressed about this and information brought to the council about what we're doing from administering from a city standpoint.
Yes, ma'am, Madam President, to the councilors, to Mr. Green, thank you for raising the issues. And there has been engagement on Brother Brian and several of the parks. So it's a combination of things that the council will be receiving updates on soon. And it ranges from the engagement that's being done by both city staff and our partners, by recommendations that are gonna be made, to organizations that provide feeding opportunities in the park, and then opportunities that we can increase the visibility, both with staffing and technology, so that we can have regular lines of sight. Because our B P D does go out, our, our support teams go out as well. Oftentimes when they go out, obviously that's behavior that they want to catch while it's happening. But they also want to maintain the dignity of the individuals who are there as well, so it's a delicate balance. So we feel that a consistent presence, consistent eye by folk who can go in and engage to address the issue, provide those citizens with the, with the care that we would hope that they would accept, is the formula for it. And it's not something that we're saying is going to take forever. That's something that's been ongoing since the Brother Brian issue. It's been raised several times, and the team members have gone out several times. So it's not lost on us, the balance between allowing these individuals, who in many instances will choose this, this walk, to have the freedom to choose this walk, but not, not encroach upon the liberties of those who want to patronize the park. So you'll be receiving an update on the pallet program and this park and several others that have been elevated to the administration.
Thank you, we look forward to that. Thank you very much. Those are the end of our speakers, Mr. Clerk. All right, at this time, we do want to thank our officers on duty today, Officer James Hall, Officer Derek Square, and Officer Micah Blair. We appreciate for your service and working with us today. At this time, councilors, we'll entertain a motion and a second.
All in favor, let it be known by the Senate.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, meeting is adjourned.